Regular meeting number 15 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, your goodness and mercy stretch through the farthest corners of the earth and into the deepest places of the human heart. Here are prayers this day as we gather at this evening session of Columbus City Council. Give to the members of this council and their staffs the wisdom and courage to both discern and implement laws and directives that will benefit the citizens of our great city. These members of council realize that not all the worthy causes that come before them can be answered with appropriate legislation, and yet they ask for divine guidance to judge rightly those things that will be of best benefit to the greatest number of citizens, especially the poor, the disabled, the young, the old, and the marginalized. Amid the many demands that come before them, help these members of council to work together in harmony for the good of our city and her citizens. And grant all of us, Lord God, the grace we need to join together to seek and find a better tomorrow for all of us. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have an exciting initiative. It's the Walk with the Dock. It's sponsored by the Department of Recreation and Parks. It will begin March the 29th. It'll be all over our city. On the north side, Woodward Park and Community Center at 5174 Carl Road. They will meet in the front of picnic tables. And then on the south side, Indian Mound Park and Community Center at 3901 Parsons Avenue. Meet at the Shelter House. And then again, those dates for the north and the south side will again commence March the 29th and end November the 8th. On the west side, Dodge Park and Community Center at 667 Sullivan Avenue. Meet at the front entrance of the park. And the far east side, Big Walnut Park and Far East Community Center at 1826 Latimer Drive. And they will commence April the 5th and end November the 15th. These are long morning walks. There'll be physicians from Mount Carmel Health System or the Ohio State University Wexler Medical Center. For more information, you can contact the Recreation and Parks Office at 645-3300. Again, that number for contact is 645-3300. Director McKnight, any additional comments relative to this important initiative?
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, no. I think you've summed it up very well. It's an exciting project, and really it's a collaboration with us. Us and the Columbus Health Department have put this program together with some other partners, and this is the second year. We're excited about continuing the program.
Thank you very much. That is all that I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein? President Pro Tem Miller? Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, President Ginther. First, I would like to have Sharon Ware and the Leadership Academy come forward to the podium. As they're coming, I would like to introduce the members of the current Leadership Academy class and Mrs. Sharon Ware, the Assistant Impact Director for the United Way of Central Ohio. The Neighborhood Leadership Academy of the United Way of Central Ohio is an eight-month-long program, and it consists of 50 in-class hours and members work on the development of a class project. It is designed to provide valuable training to current and emerging community leaders in the following areas: advocacy, consensus building, effective collaboration, and communication skills. After all, Columbus is about us, all of us, working together to make this the best place to live, work, and raise a family. So Sharon.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President Ginther and Chair Paley, and of course, council members. You know that United Way has always been committed to capacity building, especially in regard to our communities. We are delighted that last year with the sponsorship of Fifth Third Bank and this year with Donato's, we have been able to fulfill that dream of extending our capacity building to community leaders and those aspiring to become leaders. So at this time, we would like to introduce a very familiar face in our program to you is Brandon McElroy, who would like to share with you his impression of the academy.
Thank you, Sharon. Members of council, President Ginther. I stand before you as a representation of a small group of community leaders, but a very strong and powerful group. I have learned over these eight months a lot about each and every individual side of our city. I have learned of a lot of different representatives of that city, of this city, excuse me, whether it be from religious organizations to the business community, small businesses, and just your average citizen that really wants to step out and make a difference. We've had the opportunity to travel and do touring of our own city, which was very eye-opening because, you know, as we on our daily basis drive up and down High Street or Broad, you don't really stop to appreciate what's here. We've had that opportunity. At this current time, we're finishing up projects that allow us to further delve inside issues and situations in different communities, whether it be the south side, Franklinton, and the King Lincoln area as well. So we're looking at ways to present to yourselves and our other residents within the area on what solutions we've found, what issues we've found, and what solutions that we've come up with in those areas. It's been a very eye-opening experience. Each and every person here has been a true leader within the community as well as within this group and this organization. A big thank you to yourselves here as well, the partnership between Donato's Fifth Third and the United Way of Central Ohio for allowing us the opportunity to be able to come together and to learn as much as we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. There's a lot of community leaders that I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with their faces. I actually went out there. These people were going to this class through thick and thin, through any weather. I went out there on a really snowy day, and they were all there. And they were all there all Saturday morning away from their families, dedicated to promoting this city and their neighborhoods. One of the things I suggested to them today, which I see Experience Columbus in the room, is that they become tourist ambassadors since there's great community leaders. So I told them to look on your website. So give them a call, Experience Columbus. Are there any other comments from council members? Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, Ms. Paley, Councilmember Paley, for allowing us to have the opportunity to speak with all of the community leaders. I had said to you, and I mean it with all sincerity, how much we appreciate all of your service. The truth is, you know, we could not get our work done without your dedication to your communities, to your families. I think the kind of work, the intricate work that you've done over these eight months will certainly provide a platform for us to continue to do our work, to think about things perhaps in a different way, to make our city, continue to make our city great. And so today, we really honor you for your service, for your work. I know many of you, and I know the kinds of hours that you spend away from your families, the dedication that you have to our city. And all I would say is God bless you and thank you for your good works on behalf of all of our families and our children.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairwoman Paley, and certainly to Sharon. Thank you for your leadership with this program and to each and every one of you who is here. I know many of you and the work that you do in our communities each and every day. And I know what a sacrifice it is to be, to work every day and then to go and spend eight months working in a program and doing the work to make you successful. So I want to say thank you on behalf of the city, too. Thank your family for allowing you to be away from them to be able to continue to make this city a great place. And I wish you much success as you continue through this program and much success. And look to you as you continue to lead our city and to take on additional responsibilities to help our city to move forward. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you.
The presentations are on Saturday. They're final written and oral presentations, and I believe they're graduation. And I wasn't going to do this, but I can't let you walk away without each one of you quickly introducing yourself and what neighborhood you're from so that people know where you're at and where they can ask you about the program.
Hi, I'm Tress, and I represent Lyndon.
I'm Robin Watson. I'm from the far south side of Columbus.
I'm Christian Rose Anderson. I'm from the King Lincoln District.
I'm Teresa G., and I'm with the south side.
I'm Ariel Ziegler. I'm Milo Grogan.
I'm Kim Campbell. I'm with Lincoln Village.
I'm Brittany Brown. I'm from the south side of Columbus as well.
I'm Nick Stanich with Franklinton.
I'm Becky Walcott, far south Columbus.
I'm Candy Carr from the King Lincoln District.
I'm Anne Heidrick, and I represent Parsons in the south side.
James Alvey. I work in the Near East Side, South and Main Street.
Thank you, and I hope to see you on Saturday. Next, I would like to invite David Cheeseborough, the President and CEO of the Center of Science and Industry, and Vice President Deb Hackathorn to the podium to accept Resolution 0037X 2014 to recognize and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Center of Science and First, I move for adoption.
Second? Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
The Center of Science and Industry opened in 1964 at Memorial Hall on Broad Street. Five decades and one move later, COSI is viewed as a standout among its peers, including being named America's Number One Science Center for Families by Parent Magazine. In the past 50 years, COSI has engaged with over 30 million people from all 50 states and around the world, both onsite and through its award-winning outreach programs. COSI is a founding member of the Science Museum Exhibit Collaborative and a longstanding member of the Association of Science Technology Centers. COSI features more than 300 interactive exhibits throughout themed exhibition areas like Energy Explorers, Ocean Space Gadgets, Life, Little Kids Space Progress, the Outdoor Big Science Park, and Lily Pad. These exhibits provide experiences for all ages, levels, to combine science facts and learning through play. In addition to its exhibits, COSI has several live shows such as Electrostatic Generator Show. There is also a seven-story Excreme Screen Theater, the Science-to-Go Retail Store, and the Atomic Cafe Restaurant. COSI also hosts traveling exhibitions from other museums throughout the year. Over 5 million students have experienced COSI's education programs. These outreach education programs are tailored to support national and statewide science curriculum and standards. Programs such as interactive video conferencing and COSI on Wheels bring science learning to students throughout Ohio and across the country. Another program COSI cultivated is the Camp In Program, and this is the overnight program for Girl Scouts that began in COSI in 1972. The program has since expanded to Boy Scouts and is now duplicated nationwide at other science centers and museums. COSI motivates a desire towards a better understanding of science, industry, health, and history through involvement in exhibits, demonstrations, and a variety of educational activities and experience. COSI is for the enrichment of the individual and for a more rewarding life on our planet Earth. And before I open the floor to Mr. Cheeseborough and Ms. Hackathorn, I must say that the Sherlock Holmes exhibit is awesome. I have been there. So thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, we really appreciate the fact that as an integral part of this city's history, that we're being recognized by the city leadership, it was a point of inspiration and innovation back in the 1960s to start what is now one of the oldest and largest, and as, thank you, one of the most respected, science centers, not only in this country but worldwide. And that inspiration and innovation continues to today, and we are so appreciative of the support and the recognition by the city, and we hope we're giving back to the city, something that helps, you know, the smart and open profile that we're trying to create for Columbus and make other people understand. Those millions of people we engage in, we're taking that message to them as well. So thank you very much. Deb, did you have anything?
Any other comments from council members?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. Yes, I have a resolution this evening, and as I begin to read it, I'm going to ask a number of individuals to walk toward the podium. The first person I'm going to ask is Sue Foley, and then Jane Scott, and Todd Tooney, and Bill Lafayette, and Tom Katzenmeyer, and Julie Kekstein, and George O'Donnell, and Lucy Wolf. Oh, I'm sorry, Rich, I didn't see you come in. Rich, come up. Rich, turn pack. Please walk. And any other members of the CMC Board if I've missed anyone. This is Resolution Number 0033X-2014, and it is to celebrate the contributions of the Columbus Metropolitan Club in honor of Women's History Month. Whereas in 1976, 13 civic-minded women leaders, Dorothy Reynolds, Nadine Miller, Sue Foley, Mary Lazarus, Phyllis Green, Harriet Bracken, Lou Briggs, Sally Bloomfield, Audrey Anison, Trudy Noe, Mary Miller, Lita Martine, and Joanne Wharton Murphy created the Columbus Metropolitan Club to provide opportunities for civic engagement for themselves as well as everyone in the community. Whereas while they were not always invited or welcomed into the clubs of their day, the founders determined from the beginning that their club would be open to everyone regardless of gender, age, race, ethnicity, political persuasion, sexual orientation, religious preference, or any other demographic distinction. Whereas operating as a not-for-profit member organization, the Columbus Metropolitan Club is completely unbiased and nonpartisan in its presentation of topics of interest and importance to the Columbus community and beyond. Whereas the Columbus Metropolitan Club is now nearly 1,000 members strong and is funded entirely by member dues, form registrations, and private and corporate gifts. And whereas annually, the Columbus Metropolitan Club presents 50 to 80 televised programs and events featuring hundreds of speakers and an audience of thousands. Whereas the Columbus Metropolitan Club is an established and respected organization that convenes various groups to advance the city of Columbus in the arts, culture, education, science and technology, economic and downtown development, leadership, health care, business, transportation, politics, and many other newsworthy issues. Whereas the Columbus Metropolitan Club connects its forum attendees with the most influential people and the issues that shape our Columbus community, our state, our country, and our world through weekly newsworthy public forums. And whereas the Columbus Metropolitan Club embodies the 2014 Women's History Month project theme of women of character, courage, and commitment in their 38 years of service to the community, now therefore be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, that this council celebrates and honors the Columbus Metropolitan Club for their years of encouraging diversity, discussion, and debate. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I don't know which order we want to speak, is Jane, are you going to come up first and then?
Thank you so much. This is really a very distinguished honor. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, and President Ginther, and the rest of you for this recognition. On behalf of Sue Foley, a representative of our founders, Todd Tooney, my chair, the other board members, and our staff and our nearly 1,000 members, we accept this recognition and look forward to continuing to serve the community. It's with great deal of pride that we convene the community conversation almost every week, sometimes more often. Many of you have been there, many of you are members. I would invite any of you who are not members to please consider joining the Columbus Metropolitan Club. You're all welcome. Many of you have been on our stage, and we look forward to continued service, and thank you so much. It's a great deal of honor that we have to be here this evening, and I welcome Sue or Todd or anyone else. Thank you so much.
Sue?
I think the most important thing is the continuation. Founding was one step, but continuation is what's most important.
Thank you. And again, it is, I think, as you said, continuation for 38 years is important, and I don't know, Sue, when you and the other 12 women started the organization, if you thought it was going to still be here for 38 years, but we're so happy that it is, and we're so happy that the women came together to start such an amazing organization that is so important to the success of our city. So congratulations to you, and I have a resolution for you personally and then a resolution for your organization. Let's give it a round of applause. The first one is regarding health care. We are in the final countdown for individuals to sign up for health care coverage. With only seven days left, please make sure you encourage your friends, your family, and neighbors to get covered. Individuals can enroll in health care coverage through the health care insurance marketplace at healthcare.gov. Also, the Columbus Metropolitan Library locations provide internet access to healthcare.gov so our customers may participate in the marketplace. There's also free hands-on assistance in signing up for health care coverage through the healthcare.gov. It's provided by the Ohio Association of Food Banks, the central Ohio's official Affordable Care Act Navigator. Consumers may contact Ohio Association of Food Banks at 1-800-648-1176, or visit www.ohioforhealth.org. Or other local systems can be also found at localhealth.healthcare.gov. So don't let the clock run out on you. Please act now. The other announcement is that I just want to share how wonderful our Columbus Public Health Department is. It is official, over the last two years, the Columbus Public Health has been working towards becoming a nationally accredited public health department with the Public Health Accreditation Board, and it has paid off. This accreditation advances quality and performance with CPH. It demonstrates accountability and lays the foundation for improved protection, promotion, and preservation in our community. As of March 16th of 2014, there were only 20 local health departments and two state health departments that have been accredited. And now that number has increased by one with CPH. So congratulations to Dr. Long and her health commissioners, the board of health, and the over 400 full and part-time staff for this achievement. Can we give them a round of applause, please? And with that, that's all I have this evening in announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? And I think our servant judge in many ways, shape, or form, Judge Barrows, has ducked out. Judge, thank you for cleaning up the director's mess. And I didn't want your opportunity to share any comments passed by if you had anything to share. Thank you.
I hope this is the only time we can touch something out like that.
I'm sure the mayor feels the same way. At this time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda, in the Health and Human Services Committee 0569-2014, and in Any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, may we have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance 678-2014, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 538-2014, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 424, 425, 453, 454, 528, 595-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 360, 376, 475, and 655-2014. Development Committee Ordinance 666-2014. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance 740-2014. Zoning Committee Ordinance 429-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolution of Expression 28X-2014. Finance Committee Ordinance is 505, 510, 546, 596, 599, 607-2014. Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 476, 477, 478. 599, 607-2014, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 476, 477, 478, 535, 536, 556, 565, 566, 568, 570, 573, 578-2014, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 369, 399, 411, 606, 608, 611, 614, 617, 634, 644, 690-2014, Public Safety and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is 301, 375, 490, 563, 564, 574, 651-2014, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 306, 355, 378, 391, 445, 452, 485, 12, 555, 602, 603, 610, 613-2014, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 374, 499, 508, 571, 576, 585, 581, 582, 587, 593, 630, 675-2014, Small and Minority Business Development Committee Ordinance 642-2014, Technology Committee Ordinance is 286, 377, 509, 627, 638-2014, Development Committee Ordinance is 516, 531, 540, 547, 577, 579, 583, 622, 641, and 663-2014, Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A00, 21, 22, 25, 26, 27, and 29-2014.
Thank you, Clerk Levens. We do have three speakers on the consent agenda this evening. Our first speaker is Dana Meisner. And I believe, Mr. Meisner, you've signed up to speak on, is it 0579-2014 in support of it?
Yes, this is the 200,000 from the city of Columbus to the PACT Partners Achieving Community Transformation on the East Side. And by the way, I am Dana Meisner with the Near East Area Commission District One, which includes a large part of the Bronzeville neighborhood, in the previous Poindexter Village, Lincoln Theater, King Arts Complex area. And as a commissioner, I have been asked by various people in the neighborhood about what's happening with the PACT. We had, in the last two years, Goody Clancy doing a plan with the neighborhood, and we had many meetings, and there were many media extravaganzas, including the one at East High School with Angela Pace, but there wasn't much back and forth. Now that Goody Clancy has completed the plan, and the city is now adding an additional 200,000 to the PACT process, the community is wanting to have a serious meeting about the status of what is happening, when it's going to happen, what has happened. And for instance, we have Community Properties of Ohio, which is about to do a major development on 17th between Long and Broad Street, and community members are wondering, what's the status of this? What does it look like? With the 200,000 being taxpayer dollars, we have city taxpayers, city tax monies, we have state tax monies, and federal tax monies. So we, the taxpayers, are wanting to have some input in what is going to be put into our neighborhood. So it's critical that we have this meeting, so we all are on the same table, see things eye to eye, because we don't want to have what just recently happened on Parsons in the Old Town area when they came before the commission, the Woods Development, wanting to do a development there which was not received kindly because the community did not have adequate input, which was very frustrating because many of us read what the Woods Development is doing in the short north and all the back and forth they've had with that area commission. So with this $200,000 you're putting into the pot, we could have discussions about what's going on 17th, how the community sees the Goody Clancy Plan being used, possibly modified, what's the status of the Poindexter Development with Moody Nolan, what's the status of Saunders Park, which is fenced off, we know there's some issues there, what's going on with Taylor Avenue, and what's the status of our grocery store since that was put on the back burner, but we know the city bought the store there at Mount Vernon and Champion. So with all those things considered, the possible location for such a meeting, which would be very well attended, could be the King Arts Center where we previously had some meetings. So I give my support to this tentatively with the hopes that we can have increased participation with the community on these monies. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Any questions or comments for Mr. Meisner? Director, or anything you'd like to add to any of the statements or questions raised, or anything regarding this legislation council should know?
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. We are working through the process with the PACT group. We'll find out when the next community outreach opportunity they have is, and make sure that we get information to the commission on the projects that we have going on.
Thank you, Director. Our next speaker on the consent agenda is, consent agenda is Jenny O'Keefe. Ms. O'Keefe, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium. You've signed up to speak in support of 0570-2014. If you'd just share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Ma'am, you have three minutes.
Sure. It's Jenny O'Keefe, 154D Brandywine Drive, Westerville, Ohio, 43081. I'm the CEO of Amethyst here in Columbus. And President Ginther and members of the council, thank you for letting me be here. As you probably know, Amethyst has been providing services to our community 30 years, for 30 years this next month. So we're pretty, I look pretty good, too, I think. I always tell people, I used to have red hair until I went to work at Amethyst. I'm gone. But anyway, it's a real pleasure to be here. This project called Heart Home Project, and Heart Home really stands for, for us, a home embracing addiction, recovery, and treatment, which is what we do. And we have been giving women and their children permanent supportive housing with drug and alcohol, treatment services, trauma services, tobacco treatment, case management, and pretty much anything you can think of to help them on their way. For, a goal for our client and families is to help them find lifelong sobriety, manage their mental health diagnosis, restore and heal the family, and give the women and their children a strong foundation so that their future gives them economic stability. This particular funding targets a population, an underserved segment, that we are seeing come to us, and we have been serving homeless women and their children. This funding would allow us to expand that to target very low-income women who don't necessarily meet the definition, the HUD definition of homelessness. So we're pretty excited if we could do that. It's hard to turn people away when they want help, and we always feel very strongly that treatment for the mother is prevention for the child, which, in my view, is even better because we're saving the next generation. The funding would also allow, in addition to the treatment, our program, long-term program, we'd also be able to help pregnant and postpartum women, another subset that we have not been able to serve if they did not meet the homeless criteria. So we have an opiate epidemic in Columbus and hope to do some partnering around this population, have the babies and moms come right from the hospital and help the baby through withdrawal and get mom treatment, and so that's kind of a bonus. We are most grateful to this council for all the support that we have had in the past, and I hope that that continues. I think it's probably the finest group of policymakers I've ever been with, and I'm really grateful for that. And the only other thing I wanted to say is that, in case you don't realize what a good investment we are, one of the women in the leadership program is about to graduate Amethyst. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe, for coming down this evening and sharing your thoughts with council. Any questions or comments for Ms. O'Keefe? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther, yes. Jenny has certainly done an amazing job over the last 30 years, and the legislation she's speaking on tonight is one of the amendments that I put through on council to be able to support this program. We recognize that certainly there are a number of women that are homeless that are coming to Amethyst, but as she just mentioned, there is certainly a need for services to low-income women to be able to support, to help them move from their addictive illness to move forward to take care of their children. And as she just spoke, she's also just mentioned about the women that may be coming there that are just getting, you know, just have had babies, and certainly if you think about infant mortality and these babies that are not living past their first birthday, that if we can get women into these services a lot earlier, they will not have these children that addicted to this, to the different types of addictive illness, and they can move forward. So thank you, Jenny and Amethyst, for the work that you do each and every day to help women move forward in their lives and to help them with making sure that they're whole and as well as their children. So obviously, I'm in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much, President Ginther. Let me also, I want this moment to pass without also acknowledging the work of Jenny. For many, many years, I don't think you'll find anybody that's more compassionate, that has, with just long-term, not only just, interest would not be a strong enough word, but certainly commitment to families and children, the dedication that she has displayed really serves us all well. And I've had the opportunity to visit Amethyst and see the results of her good works and her staff, and I just want her to know how much we appreciate all that she is doing for the women of the city of Columbus and the families that they represent.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Any additional comments or questions? Our final speaker on the consent agenda this evening is Trent Smith. Mr. Smith, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium. You've signed up to speak in support of 0577-2014. If you'd share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. My name is Trent Smith. I'm the executive director for the Franklinton Board of Trade. I'm a Franklinton area commissioner and also a resident of Franklinton on West Park Avenue. And Chair Mills, I want to support this legislation that you have for the West Side Community Fund, because I also know that this legislation will directly impact Councilmember Tyson's ordinance 658 for the Job Training and Employment Initiative for the West Side. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for the support for the West Side residents, to get them properly trained to be able to take advantage of some of the jobs that are eventually going to be heading to Franklinton and the Hilltop based on all the development that is currently taking place. Right now, we're taking kind of baby steps with a lot of this development, but eventually we're going to have, in my mind, Broad Street filled up again with retail and thriving business as it was in the glory years past, and certainly we can't achieve that without having the population of those neighborhoods properly trained to take on those positions. I also wanted to tell you that the Franklinton Board of Trade has taken a much more aggressive and active attempts at partnering with our friends on the Hilltop. For example, the Shalom Zone is an organization that I have recently started to do much more collaboration with, and I know that they have some workplace initiatives to help women from either abused or addictive situations coming out of those recoveries, to be able to find proper skills and become entrepreneurs. And those are important initiatives as well. And as far as the Franklinton neighborhood, we're also partnering with the Franklinton Preparatory Academy to help some of their juniors and seniors become, partnered with Franklinton businesses for mentor and internship opportunities. We actually recently had a meeting with some of our businesses who sit on the Board of Directors for the Board of Trade, along with the school administrators, and we have a actual plan in place right now to hopefully implement these types of activities within the summer of 2014, possibly into the fall. So I just wanted to let you know what we are doing from a grassroots level, as far as taking the steps to get especially students interested in these initiatives, but certainly that would not be possible without funding and your support. So I just wanted to tell you that I support this, and thank you very much for the efforts.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening and sharing your thoughts on the legislation. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Sir Second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 0478, 0608, and 0391-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 0579-2014, 0622-2014, on which I am abstaining.
President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first ordinance I have is 0533-2014, and as I'm reading this ordinance, I'm going to ask for Brian Ross, Linda Logan, and Stephen Weaver to move towards the podium, is to authorize the Department of Finance and Management to contract with Experian's Columbus for marketing services to increase tourism and convention business and strengthen the image of the city of Columbus, Ohio, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of 2.39%, presently estimated at $8,256,000, of a combined rates of 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, and to declare an emergency. The investment in Experian's Columbus represents the council's ongoing commitment to economic development. This is important because meetings and tourism currently add more than $7.8 billion a year into our local economy. Visitors pay $1.04 billion in local, state, and federal taxes. One in every 12 salary jobs in Franklin County is supported by tourism. The Experian's Columbus has a goal of Destination Columbus, a five-year plan to make Columbus a bigger player in the convention and tourism markets. They have another goal of adding about 5,500 new jobs to our community. And with that, I am going to turn the floor over to the president of Experian's Columbus, Mr. Brian Ross.
Well, thank you very much, and good evening. Thank you, Council President Ginther, Finance Chair, Ms. Tyson, Councilmember Tyson, council members, also Auditor Dorian and Attorney Pfeiffer. We're very, very excited. Anytime we get the opportunity to come down and share the importance of the tourism industry on our economy is a great opportunity for us. Experian's Columbus and the Greater Columbus Sports Commission are engaged in many bold initiatives right now, and we couldn't do it without the active engagement of all of you, and the mayor, and also our county commissioners. As I look around council here, I know that we've had events over the last month, and we've seen each and every one of you at every event helping sell our city to these wonderful conventions we're working on bringing in. Some of the key major groups we're looking at is the International Federation of Library Associations, National Urban League, Full Gospel Baptist, and the International City County Management Association, just to name a few of the large conventions we're working on securing for our community. And also, we're continuing to serve great customers. I'm sure just this month, most people knew that the Arnold Sports Festival was in town, which created a lot of traffic jams. That's good for us. That means there's a lot of people in our city spending a lot of money. In addition, with the Sports Commission, Linda refers to it as the finals for Ohio High School Basketball and Wrestling, and I think fencing, a few other finals that come through as well. So it's definitely a big month for her. Obviously, Linda, the executive director of the Sports Commission, and her team are doing a tremendous job. And we also want to say that with you as a consistent partner, we've been able to also... And we also want to say that with you as a consistent partner, we've been able to also get new partners involved with all the tremendous things that are happening in our city. As many of you have seen, the state of Ohio just proposed new investment in the facilities at the Ohio Expo Center, and that's important to us to help retain and grow key groups such as the Quarter Horse Congress and also the Arnold Sports Fitness Weekend. In addition to that, the riverfront's being transformed. Our zoo is about to open, the Heart of Africa exhibit in May, which is a very exciting time for us. So, it's a great time to be in Columbus. But, as you know, it's not just about all the big bids. It's not just about the RNC DNC. It's not just about the Women's Final Four. It's also about how we assist the growth of the tourism industry by helping our small businesses, residents, and partners enjoy the shared benefit of economic growth. We have almost 900 members, and it's fun to work with them and see them prosper in our community. I have just a few examples. One is the Columbus Food Adventures run by Bethia Wolf. Since starting her business in 2010, there have been numerous new culinary tours around Columbus and even launched, Bethia even launched a sister company, Columbus Brew Adventures. Our tourism membership and marketing departments have worked very closely with Bethia to grow her market and her business, and she's become a big fan. With that, I would like to introduce Steve Weaver, who is part owner with his wife, I can make sure I leave that in, of the Candle Lab. So, he's going to share his story real quick.
Thank you, President Ginter, members of council. My name is Steve Weaver, and together along with my wife, we own the Candle Lab. We have three stores here in central Ohio. We have Worthington, Grandview, and the Short North. And because we're in three different communities, we're members of all sorts of organizations, all the local chambers of commerce and the local convention visitors bureaus, the local business associations. But by a big margin, our investment in Experience Columbus and our partnership with them yields us by far the best marketing bang for our buck. They've been tremendous partners along the way. Not only do they go out and speak to groups and bring in groups that we wouldn't be able to reach on our own as merchants, but then they give us the tools that we need as a business to reach out to those groups and to make sure that they're coming into our stores and into our communities. It's been, when we first started, we thought our candle pouring experience might be couples or groups of three or four, and as we have, Experience Columbus has introduced us into all this market and brought us all of this business, we've had to go back and actually remodel two of our stores and redesign our newest store to take into account the bigger groups that they're bringing. So, it's had an enormous effect on our business, on our neighboring merchants, and on our communities, and we're incredibly thankful for the partnership.
Thank you, Steve. So, attractions, restaurants, tours, shops, businesses of all sizes thrive when we work together. We're proud to be a part of the team, helping drive the spirit of collaboration forward. A healthy tourism economy increases the bed tax revenues with, which help generate funds for the arts and human services. Thanks for your support and for passing our annual contract this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions or comments? And thank you, Mr. Weaver, for coming down and sharing your story. Those are great stories that we want to hear in our community, and that you're employing people, and so thank you so very much for being, coming down, and thank you for coming and sharing the support that Experience Columbus has given your organization. And with that, I will move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0537-2014, is to authorize the Department of Finance and Management to contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., for the purpose of fostering and sustaining arts and culture services that enrich the Columbus community, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of 97% of the 1.68%, which presently represents, is estimated at $5,606,600 of the combined rates of the 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, and to declare an emergency. Excuse me. And the Greater Columbus Arts Council, they provide about $226 million in economic activity, 8,500 jobs in our community, and certainly make this a great place in terms of our quality of life. And we do have a speaker that is going to come and share some comments about this legislation. Her name is Erica Clark Covert. Could you please walk to the podium? She's representing the Women Crafting Change. Good evening.
Thank you for having me. My name is Erica Clark Covert. I'm on the Board of Global Gallery. We are a nonprofit art organization here in town. We focus on fair trade, sustainability, and cultural education, and you guys are helping us fund our educational program, Women Crafting Change. We created that program in 2012 with the Greater Hilltop Area Shalom Zone, and with the funding we will receive, we are going to create a job training program. We're a little bit more specialized. We create, we started out with crafting events for low-income and immigrant women on the West Side, and through those crafting events, we help women with skill development, empowerment, and with the job training program aspect, we are going to, our goal is to have ten women by the end of the year through this program, partnering with local creative businesses and helping them empower themselves and become more financially stable through job placement and education, which will in turn help their families and their community. And I would like to invite everyone to come out. Our next crafting event is this Thursday at the Hilltop Library in the community room. You can also learn more about us on Facebook, Women Crafting Change. Check it out. And we are excited to announce we're opening up studio space in Franklinton. We have, more information can be found on our Facebook page, and that'll be on April 6th.
Thank you for coming down. Any questions for Ms. Covert? Thank you. And I see the President and CEO of GCAC in the audience, Mr. Tom Katzenmeyer. Thank you. And I think you're a year on your job now, is that correct? So, thank you for serving in that capacity, your leadership to our, to the organization. And with that, I'm going to move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
Thank you. The next ordinance in finance is 0563-2014, to authorize and direct the city auditor to enter into a contractual agreement with AKA Enterprise Solutions, Inc., for the maintenance and support services necessary for the accounting, purchasing, budgeting, asset management, and vendor services systems, to waive competitive bidding provision of the Columbus Code of 1959, to authorize expenditure of $85,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. AKA Enterprise Solutions has individuals with the expertise necessary to continue to provide the technical services on our current financial system. And we will be, hopefully, having our new system will be in place in 2015, and so we're asking that we waive competitive bidding so this organization can complete, can continue to work with our organization without there being any interruption in our maintenance and support services. And with that, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
The last ordinance in finance is to, is ordinance 0683-2015. It is to adopt the capital improvements budget for the twelve months ending December 31st of 2014, or until such a time as a new capital improvements budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for the capital improvements requiring legislative authorization 2014 to repeal ordinance number 0645-2013 as amended and to declare an emergency. I move to table this legislation for one week.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
And I would like to table it for one week.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
Thank you very much. And I now would like to move to Health and Human Services. Okay, all right. The first ordinance in Health and Human Services is 0464-2014, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services in the amount of $3,810,365.45, to authorize the appropriation of $3,810,365, 810, 365.45 from the unappropriated balance of the Health Department's Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation is for the HIV Care Part A grants, purpose to improve access to medical care for persons living with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio. The goal is to, that each client will receive viral suppression, which improves their quality of life and reduces the risk of spreading the infection. Columbus is eligible for the HIV Care Part A because it has been severely affected by the HIV epidemic, and this means that there were at least 1,000, but fewer than 2,000 cases of AIDS reported and confirmed during the most recent period of five calendar years. Since Columbus Public Health launched this program, there's been approximately 1,000 clients seen for outpatient ambulatory care, which also includes 160 clients linked to care through our linkage to care program. And I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter?
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0473-2014, to approve the grant applications of various social service agencies seeking financial assistance to address an emergency human service need pursuant to the Columbus City Codes of 1959, to authorize the Director of Development to execute grant agreements with various social service agencies to address and to provide for multiple human service needs, to authorize expenditure of $1,144,160 from the Emergency Human Services Fund, to authorize expenditure of $2,223,76 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation targets social service agencies that will provide help to families and households through programs that include, but are not limited to daycare, substance abuse prevention programs, refugee and resettlement, senior care mediation services, services for the disabled, material assistance and food programs, workforce development and youth programs, and other services by assisting with the operating needs of an agency. And with that, I would move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
Thank you. And now yield the floor to Councilmember Mills to read legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Tonight, I'd like to introduce 0529-2014, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into contracts with various medical providers for the provision of HIV-related somatic medical care and medical case management for persons living with HIV or AIDS in Delaware, Fairfield, Franklin, Licking, Madison, Morro, Pickaway, and Union Counties, to authorize expenditure of $631,448 from the Health Department Grants Fund, and pay the cost thereof, and to declare an emergency. First, I'd like to amend to thirty-day legislation.
Thank you. Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Standing.
President Ginter?
Yes.
Next, I'd like to waive second reading and call by voice.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Standing.
President Ginter?
Yes.
And next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills?
Yes.
Paley? Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
I yield for, back to Councilmember Tyson. Thank you, Councilmember Mills. The next ordinance is 0553-2014, to authorize and direct the appropriation of $100,000 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize and direct the transfer of $100,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Health Special Revenue Fund, to authorize and direct the expenditure of up to $100,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, to authorize the Director of Columbus Public Health to enter into a contract with the Nationwide Children's Hospital for the implementation of the Columbus Infant Mortality Task Force and to declare an emergency. This legislation is cosponsored by President Ginter, and this legislation is, and will be used to continue to work on, work with Nationwide Children's Hospital to develop this collaborative community plan to reduce infant mortality. And President Ginter, would you like to add any comments to this? No, thank you. So, with that, I will move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter?
Yes.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0597-2014, it's in Health and Human Services again, to authorize the appropriation transfer of $10,000 from the city's hotel motel tax fund to the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $35,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund to pay the Columbus Foundation, the Foundation for Active Living, for the management of the 2014 community gardening project. And I'm going to ask Barbara Sackler and/or Julie Smith to please walk towards the podium. This legislation will support 24 gardens this year. Ms. Sackler and Ms. Smith? Thank you.
President Ginter, Councilmember Tyson, members of council, this is the fifth year that we have been able to invest in community gardens, and between Columbus City Council, Mayor Coleman, Columbus Public Health, Franklin County Commissioners, and private-sector investors, this year, we have Whole Foods stepping up to give money to this pot. So, we can't thank you enough for year after year and having it begun by Councilmember Tyson for investing in the community. And so, I brought a grant this year. People got very happy news on Friday for the funding, and I brought a grant to just very quickly show you the impact of the investment that you've made. So, the Graham Primary School Student Garden, they are going to plant a garden on the corner of their playground. They're going to plant native plants, plants that pollinate, and edible ones. And two kindergarten classes are going to help in the beginning of this garden. They hope to not only use it as a learning tool, but to also bring together the community and the school as a whole. So, when the kindergartners come back in the fall, they'll see the blooming garden, and they'll be first graders. And then they intend to build on the garden every year with all the grades as a mission of the school. So, that's just one example of the great work, and I want to thank you. And it's my pleasure to introduce Julie Smith from Rebuilding Together Central Ohio. They are one of the best tool libraries around, and they do so much work to share with all of our gardens.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you, council, for supporting us. The Tool Library was an interesting way to get involved with community gardening. We provide knowledge and tools for people to keep their homes safe and dry, want everyone to live in a safe house, and the garden was a nice evolution for us, and we've become a hub for our community gardeners to share their experiences, their thoughts, and their ideas with each other. And that's the interesting part that's come for us. We started out with the Rota Tillers, you know, a resource. We're giving them the tools that they need, and now we're giving them places to share ideas and to communicate with each other. So, that's been a really great growing experience for us. I probably am the only director in town who had a staff meeting where I said, "Well, you want to have what, chickens in our front yard?" Of course, we can have chickens here if it's going to help community learn how to have chickens in your front yard. So, last year, we demonstrated how to have chickens. This year, we're doing something a little bit easier for me to swallow. We are working to have an exchange for people to share their seedlings, to talk about plants that are growing well for them here in the city, to start a seed repository so that we can have a seed library for seeds that are going to be successful in the gardens where we're doing our work. So, it's really exciting to be part of this. It was not what we thought we would do as a housing program, but we're certainly glad that we are part of the community that is gardening here, helping schoolchildren learn that carrots come from the ground, helping people who are seniors come in and interact with the people who are doing community gardening, and having some confidence in their neighbors because they talk to each other when they're at the Tool Library. Those are the things that are Those are the things that are really making this a great community, and I'm very proud to be part of that, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down, Ms. Smith, and certainly sharing all the reasons why community gardening is so important to our community, and thank you for what you do each and every day. Thank you. I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0707-2014. I'm going to ask Dr. Olivia Thomas to start walking towards the podium. This is to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with the Nationwide Children's Hospital Foundation for the support of the expansion of the West Side Primary Care Center, to authorize the appropriation of $6,100 from the West Side Community Fund to Department Development, and to authorize expenditure of $225,000 from the West Side Community Fund and to declare an emergency. The West Side Community Fund is a fund that both the City of Columbus and Penn National gave me agreed to contribute 2.5 million to the West Side Community Fund, and this fund will be used for a variety of projects related to the neighborhood immediately surrounding the casino development and the citizens thereof. And so tonight's funding, this funding will be used towards the construction of a new community education space and for clinical office spaces to serve approximately 10,000 patients who utilize the West Side Primary Care Center. And so with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ginther and councilmembers, for allowing me to come and to speak just a few minutes about our primary care network in general, and then particularly about our West Side Center. So Children's has had primary care centers in the community since 1966. We have about 80,000 children who call us their doctor, and this past year, we saw over 162,000 patient visits from that group of patients. So our West Side Center really is one of the busiest centers within our whole network of 10 clinics. And so that particular center has about 10,000 patients that visit that center, and last year, they had over 25,000 patient visits. So you can see how busy that center is. We locate in areas where there are a lot of underserved children, and we want to be there for those children because many of them have no other source of care that they can go to. So we want to be in the communities where those children live. Our West Side Center really started first on the West Broad Street clinic site, and this particular site, over just a few years, actually outgrew its space, and then we relocated them to their current location, which is on Industrial Mile, so very close to the casino. What we want to do with the funding is actually expand physical space in the center because it's a small center, and with that large a volume of patients going through, we really do need the extra space to see those patients. And yes, we're going to use that money particularly for funding of educational space and also some clinical space that we will be able to do some things, particularly with children, around asthma, obesity, gosh, looking at ADHD, and some of those things that we can use, group settings for that kind of problem that these children may have. So I really want to thank the City of Columbus and council, and we want to thank the Hollywood Casino because without, you know, the help of all of them, we would not be able to do this. And I want to thank a few people in particular that have been real instrumental in this. Amit Patel, the CEO at Hollywood Casino, and others at the casino, as Camila Prince, who's the Director of Community Relations, Chris Riley, who's their CFO. And then with council, specifically, I want to thank Ashley Sun and Hannah Jones because they've been very involved with us in this project. And then I also want to say thank you to Tim Robinson, our Executive Vice President at Nationwide Children's, who's also been very much involved. So thank you very much for that funding.
You're so welcome, and thank you for serving the residents on the West Side and helping to make sure those children get all the services that they need, especially around obesity and eating properly, et cetera. So thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig Klein Miller Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I would now like to go back to page 10 and turn the floor over to Councilmember Mills.
I'd like to introduce 0569-2014 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with AIDS Resource Center Ohio and Nationwide Children's Hospital for the provision of behavioral health services related to HIV and AIDS, to authorize expenditure of $342,601 from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. First, I'd like to amend to 30-day by voice.
Craig Klein Miller Mills.
Yes.
Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to waive second reading and call a voice vote.
Craig Klein Miller Mills.
Yes.
Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I'd like to now move for passage by voice, please.
Craig Klein Miller Mills.
Yes.
Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I yield a four. Back to Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. The last ordinance I have this evening, and it's in workforce development, I can move to that area. Thank you. Ordinance number 0658-2014. I'm going to ask the CEO of COIC, Susan Coleman Tobert, to start walking towards the podium. And this is to authorize the Director of the Development Department to enter into contract with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, known as COIC, for the support of the West Side Job Training and Employment Initiative, to authorize expenditure of $281,100 from the West Side Community Fund and to declare an emergency. And again, I just mentioned this, the West Side Community Fund is again contributions from the City of Columbus and Penn National to contribute both $2.5 million each, and this particular legislation authorizes funding for workforce development, training, occupational skills training, referrals, job referrals, job placement services to 150 job seekers and residents of Westland, the Greater Hilltop area, and Franklinton. Ms. Susan Coleman Tobert and Ms. Frankie Nylund, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, other members of council. I'm here with my colleague Frankie Nylund, and we can't tell you how pleased we are to have the opportunity for COIC to have a site located on the West Side so that we can continue to serve the citizens of Columbus, especially on the West Side. You know, for the past 10 years, and I can't believe it's been that long for COIC, but in June, we'll be celebrating our 10th anniversary, we have had the opportunity and pleasure of working with the citizens, working with council, to help us put people into trainings, to upgrade their skills, and to get them back to work. Here in Columbus, we enjoy a very low unemployment rate of just a little over 5%, but we know that there are still pockets of communities and neighborhoods that are experiencing double-digit unemployment. And on the West Side, unfortunately, there are many neighborhoods who still need to have people go through job training and get those good jobs with those good wages. And so with these dollars, it's going to allow us to leverage some other dollars that we have, especially from Hollywood Casino, with the dollars the city council hopefully will approve tonight, and some of the dollars that we're putting with this leveraging our federal dollars, we're going to be serving over 150 citizens on the West Side, both in the Franklinton area, Westland, Greater Hilltop, and just all around those surrounding areas. So we will be locating at the West Side Neighborhood Health Center, and I'm going to ask Frankie to tell a little bit more about the services that we're going to be providing.
What we want to do is replicate what we do at 1111 East Broad Street, our job training center. We want to take the services out to the West Side. As Suzanne said, we know that Columbus and Franklin County enjoy a low unemployment rate. However, the pockets of poverty has stricken the West Side, you know, very hard. The four ZIP codes that we'll be working in, they have a range of unemployment from 7.4 to up to 31% of unemployment. So we will be working very aggressively, not only with the job seekers but with the employers, so that they can create more jobs in that area. And we will prepare the job seekers with the soft skills as well as provide funds for them to have occupational skills training so they will be prepared and qualified for these jobs that are available. So when we come back to you the next time, we want to have a very positive report on our progress and our success on the West Side.
Thank you for coming down this evening, and we look forward to that report, and certainly as it's so important for those individuals on the West Side to be able to get those jobs that we know are out there and to give them the skills to be able to move forward in their lives. So thank you so much for coming down, and look forward to those results. Move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Okay, that's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. This time, I'd ask if there was a motion to recess, and we'll return after zoning to move on to the rest of the committees. Is there a motion to recess? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We will reconvene for zoning at 6:30.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Sarah Second, clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings to 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
You'll now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. And tonight in the zoning committee, we have 559-2014 to rezone 1085 Georgesville Road, being 1.38 plus or minus acres located on the west side of Georgesville Road, 170 plus or minus feet north of Hall Road from Arroyo District to LC3, limited commercial district. The applicant is Moles Salem. Proposed use is limited commercial development. It receives a Development Commission recommendation for approval, the Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommendation for approval, and the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. I would like to first to request to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
560-2014 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3355.03(c)(3) permitted uses of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1085 Georgesville Road to permit automobile sales, automobile detailing, and automotive repair associated with automobile sales in the LC3 limited commercial district. This, the applicant is Moles Salem. The proposed use is limited commercial development. It received the Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommendation for approval and the City Department disapproval. Ms. Pine, could you briefly explain the disapproval?
Yes, the disapproval is coming from the Greater Hilltop Area Plan, which recommends community commercial uses. Those are C3 commercial uses, and with the established development pattern of LC3 along that side of Georgesville, staff thought that these uses were not quite appropriate, although the Greater Hilltop Area Commission did approve with the C4 a much more extensive use, a much more extensive list of C4 uses besides these three uses, and it was under the Development Commission's recommendation that they go through this process to seek those three uses.
Okay, thank you. With this, I'd like to recommend approval with this, so I have no speaker slips. I would like to first to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And last is 624-2013 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.029 SR Suburban Residential District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 5303 East Livingston Avenue to permit a dental office in the SR Suburban Residential District and to repeal ordinance number 1096-76 passed on July 19th of 1976. The applicant is Dr. Roger Stock. The proposed use is a dental office. It receives a Far East Area Commission recommendation for approval, and finally, the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. I'd like to first to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, Chairman Miller. Anything else come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves, sir.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. I entertain a motion to reconvene, regular meeting number 15. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. We are reconvened. Our next committee is the Recreation and Parks Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Recreation and Parks Committee, we have ordinance 0524-2014 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with various nonprofit community-based organizations to provide after-school programs and services from February the 1st through December 31st, 2014, to authorize the expenditure of $175,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund, 285, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance, along with ordinance 0525-2014, that I will be presenting next, allow the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with various community organizations to provide after-school program, programming for Columbus Public School students from low and moderate income families. Programming is designed to give children a strong sense of self-worth, academic ability, and community responsibility. Programs are operated by community-based organizations which have the knowledge, experience, and capacity to serve youth and families residing in neighborhoods of high need. Programming will provide comprehensive services, including academic assistance, parent engagement, enrichment, prevention, socialization, recreation, and nutritious meals during non-school hours. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0525-2014 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contracts with various nonprofit community-based organizations to provide after-school programs and services from February the 1st through December 31st, 2014, to authorize the expenditure of $179,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund, 285, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passes and request a voice vote. Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0649-2014 to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation Ordinance 0649-2014, authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant from the Ohio Department of Education in the amount of $2,400,000 from the 2014 Summer Food Program, to authorize the appropriation of $2,400,000 to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 286, to enter into an agreement with the Columbus City Schools to implement the Summer Food Program, to authorize the expenditure of $2,400,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund 286, and to declare an emergency. The Summer Food Service Program is administered by the U.S. Department of Agriculture through the Ohio Department of Education. The program provides nutritionally-balanced breakfasts, lunches, and snacks to qualified children in need during the summer months. The program will serve approximately 175,000 breakfast meals, 300,000 lunch meals, and 70,000, 70,000 snacks. Thousands of, thousands of children will be served through this program at over 200 sites throughout the greater Columbus area. Director McKnight, any comments relative to this ordinance?
President Ginther, Chairman Craig, members of council. As you're aware, we've been doing this program for many, many years. We're excited about continuing to support the Summer Food Program. Last year, we were able to grow the program by, I think we were up close to 480,000 meals and 212 sites. And of course, council has supported the program with some additional appropriations in the operating budget, and we look forward to continue to grow this program in 2014. We appreciate your support for this ordinance.
Thank you very much for your comments. This is an extremely important program, and certainly, God has the support of colleagues. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
May I move to Veterans Affairs? Tonight in Veterans Affairs, we have ordinance 0646-2014, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Association, Association of Food Banks, to support the Veterans Comprehensive Assistant Program, otherwise known as VCAP, to authorize the transfer of $75,000 within the general fund, to authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. This program is a $75,000 one-year contract held in the Department of Development, will address barriers to the long-term stability of up to 210 veterans. Veterans will be identified via community resource, resources, like the Veterans Courts and the Central Ohio Homeless Veterans Stand Down. This program will provide long-term case management for veterans that will include employment and wraparound services. Director Shoney, any comments relative to this extremely important legislation?
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, no, not much in terms of additional comments. This is part of our ongoing effort to make sure that we provide the best service possible to the veterans in our community.
Thank you. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein.
Let me, first, I believe that co-sponsor on this legislation is Councilmember Tyson. Comments? Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairman Craig. Just want to again, thank you for your leadership on this issue. I know that the point-in-time report, report that in 2013, there was about 1,373 sheltered and unsheltered homeless veterans within our community, and that in certainly in our city, about 57%, about 57% increase since 2000, 2012 and 2013. So just really appreciate your leadership. I know that the city is being a, being a board member for the National League of Cities in partnership with the work around homeless, homeless vets, and support you and the mayor and this work that you're doing in, in this regard. And I know Columbus is one of those cities that is certainly looking at, working with this initiative for the national, the national initiative that to end homeless, that veteran homelessness by 2015. And so, these, these two pieces of legislation that you're presenting tonight certainly goes a long way into making that a reality. So thank you for your work and all that you do to, to support veterans in this community.
Thank you very much for your comments. I did not want to overlook, represented from the bench, Judge Barrows, any comments? I know this affects the Veterans Court. Any comments tonight?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Certainly appreciate the collaboration with the courts. No comments or questions, move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 0727-2014, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with IMPACT Community Action to support Operation Hope for veterans and their families, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $100,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, and to declare an emergency. In 2012, I was honored to create a new pilot program to help keep veterans in their homes. Since then, the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund has provided $750,000 for veterans' home repairs, and we anticipate providing additional $500,000 this year. I'm so very thankful to the Housing Administrator Rita, Rita Paris, and the unsung heroes in her division who have, have made our Veterans Homes Fund such a success. Operation Hope is the next stage in my commitment to the proud men and women who, who've served our country. We know that a veteran who may benefit from our housing program also has other unmet needs. That's why I'm champli, champli, champering Operation Hope Homes, because our responsibility to empower those veterans through comprehensive case management and supportive services. In partnership with IMPACT Community Action, Operation Hope will help 100 veterans, veterans and their families receive those services, in conjunction with the Better Municipal Care for Veterans Home Fund. I want to thank you, my fellow councilmembers, for your unwavering support of, of these programs, and to Mayor Coleman for his longstanding commitment to Columbus veterans. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. 389-2014, I'd like to invite Ellen Moore up as I read the legislation, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety and to enter into a contract with Community Crime Patrol, Inc., to provide citizen patrolers to assist the Division of Police in the control and prevention of crime in the Ohio State University District, Wyandotte Park, Hilltop, Franklinton, Marion Village area, Downtown Park District, and the Northland, Northlanden area, to authorize the expenditure of $400,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to first remove, request to remove from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Moore. I'd like to, to give an opportunity to speak about Community Crime Patrol and the effect it's having on our neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. President Ginther, Safety Chair Klein, and members of council, it's always my pleasure to come and speak to you once again about Community Crime Patrol, as we begin our 24th year of service to the residents of Columbus's neighborhoods. With the great support of this council, in 2013, we worked a total of just under 50,000 hours in the University District, South Clintonville, Marion Village, German Village, Franklinton, the Hilltop, the Northland, Northlanden area, and downtown. In November of last year, we added a new patrol site in the Old Town East Franklin Park neighborhood. During 2013, the patrolers played an integral part in the arrests of 10 persons, including a drunk driver, a robbery suspect, and two persons with active warrants. They recovered several missing children and reported six fires. They've assisted dozens of injured people, calling medics out at least 20 times this year, and nearly 7,000 people have been helped by the patrolers, either with car trouble, directions, or just exchanging information about what's going on in their neighborhoods. Our unique partnerships with city agencies continue. Through the 311 system, we've reported over 2,700 code violations and over 2,000 environmental issues, such as burned-out streetlights and water leaks. We'll never know how many crimes we've deterred just by being a presence on the streets. We continue to strengthen our partnerships with the Columbus Division of Police, dozens of neighborhood block watch groups, civic associations, and area commissions. We applied for and were granted a new two-year stipend from the United Way to fund part of our patrol in the Northland, Northlanden area, as well as a successful bid to retain our current United Way funding for the Franklinton area. Our minority recruiting efforts have been quite successful as well. Of the 42 people currently on staff, 27% are persons of color. Half the staff is either female or a person of color. I'm pleased to report that we have sent 43 former CCP employees to the Columbus Division of Police. I want to publicly thank the Division of Police for their support of CCP over the years, and their interaction with the patrolers is what makes this program unique and so successful in making these neighborhoods safer. Thank you for this opportunity to talk about one of the city's best assets, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any questions about Community Crime Patrol? All right, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
We do have one speaker, Trent Smith. I think you've already addressed the council earlier this evening, so we can dismiss with the formalities of restating your name and address, but you do have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, on behalf of the Franklinton neighborhood, thank you for this, this funding of the Community Crime Patrol. As Ms. Moore has already stated, they are much more than just crime prevention, eyes and ears on the street. One of the things that I get asked most often when businesses or residents are talking to me about coming to the neighborhood is, is how safe is it? And I always bring up Community Crime Patrol being part of our neighborhood whenever I'm addressing those questions, because their very presence is a deterrent to most of the activity that we're dealing with in that neighborhood. And their relationship with the police department, I know, is very, is, is good and getting better all the time. But I just wanted to point out one thing. She already kind of addressed it, but I looked at their most recent report for February 2014, and the call of the week was actually a call that happened in the Franklinton neighborhood, where they were passing a house on Yale Avenue and smelled natural gas, and called that in. And who knows, you know, what kind of damage could have been a, a part of that situation had they not been there to actually realize the situation, and realize that it was an abandoned house that had, obviously had a problem going on. So they're not, they're not just about crime control, they're, they're about the neighborhood itself, and just kind of watching out for what's going on, whether it's illegal activity or not. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm glad that Ms. Moore was down here to give a much better explanation of, of their activities, but we in the Franklinton neighborhood are very appreciative of their, of their efforts and your support.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments for the speaker? Thank you, sir. Move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 397-2014, to authorize the appropriation of $755,000 within the Safety Initiative Fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Paul Worth and Associates for the development of a recruitment plan for public safety sworn personnel, to authorize the expenditure of $80,000 from the Safety Initiative Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions, and to declare an emergency. Ms. Ford, could you please touch upon the competitive bidding waiver?
President Ginther, Safety Chair Klein, members of council, as you're well aware, minority recruiting has become a priority for not only the Safety Director, but for city council and the mayor. So this is kind of an ongoing effort. As you're aware, civil service currently has a contract with Paul Worth to assist the Division of Fire in recruiting efforts, but to also assist with planning some fire expos. So two fire expos were held earlier this month, where we had 514 attendees, which 48% of those met the target populations of minorities and females. So we obviously consider that a success. So the additional $80,000 will go towards assisting police in doing the same thing. They'll be holding police expos. They have one scheduled in May, June, and July. So they will obviously put out lots of information, advertising that, trying to get minorities to come in and show some interest. But this will also assist police and fire both in additional recruiting efforts throughout the year, prior to testing.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And we certainly wouldn't be here without my co-sponsor on this piece of legislation, which is Councilmember Mills, who, under her leadership of the Public Safety Committee prior to my, my time heading the committee, was instrumental in the amount of work that was done in diversifying our public safety forces. So I'd like to give Councilmember Mills, if she wishes, the opportunity to speak on this.
Thank you, Chair Klein. I appreciate it. It is good to see that we're here at the point of a plan, both in the success that the Division of Fire has had, and looking forward to the same success for our Division of Police. I'm glad to see that the investment will yield a plan, the many, many meetings and conversations about it, and we're here to see some changes in both divisions that I think are already outstanding, but it'd be great to continue to be very intentional about recruiting qualified candidates to continue to protect our citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. I was fortunate enough to attend the fire expo with my daughter Stella, so she is very eager to enlist, to be a firefighter. Now, she still has about 17 years, probably before 20 years till she's eligible, but she, she, I'm sorry? 16 and a half, okay. But she, she, she sat behind the fire truck and was ready and eager to drive it away, but thankfully, I was there to hold on to her. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 590-2014, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer $340,000 from the general fund for the municipal court specialty document, document program, and to declare an emergency. Your Honor, thank you for coming down to the chambers.
Thank you. President Ginther, Chair Klein, members of council. Courts get bad publicity when they operate as speed traps, when they operate as revenue sources for their jurisdictions. Your municipal court is not like that. As you know, since you have to fund us each year, we don't return a profit to the city. We are proud, however, of the occasions when we are able to engage in restorative justice, when we are able to take people who have run afoul of the law and direct them in a better way for the betterment of themselves, their families, and their communities. This ordinance before you today represents part of that effort, where we have created specialized dockets in our court. And I want to thank you for your support of this ordinance. Now, I've brought with me tonight to speak in a little bit more detail, the Director of our specialized docket, Ms. Andrea Boxel, who I think she has addressed you before. Ms. Boxel.
Thank you. President Ginther, Chairman Klein, members of council, and Judge Barrows, for giving me an opportunity to provide you with an update. I know, regrettably, the last time that there was an update, I was on vacation, Judge Vanderkar was on vacation. I'm happy to tell you, I returned from vacation early, so that I could give you some information, because I think that this program is so important, not just for the courts, but also for the city of Columbus and for this community. It's been interesting for me, because I know that it has been a difficult role for many people to accept, that the, the court is not a service provider, they're not a social service provider, they're not a treatment provider. But the reality is, this is where we're seeing many of the people that the minister, when he gave his prayer, talked about, the disenfranchised. A lot of them out of issues of poverty and other mitigating circumstances are committing crimes. That does not give them an excuse. In fact, I would suggest that all of our programs that we coordinate actually holds them accountable and provides them with tremendous support. In the past 10 years, I've been privileged to work with the entire Franklin County Municipal Court bench, but most prominently with Judge Vanderkar, as well as Judge Herbert. And as you're aware, our problem-solving court started with the mental health program docket 10 years ago. We've now expanded. We started the alcohol drug addiction program in 2009. That program serves people who voluntarily agree to enter into any of our programs with a new charge, to say, you know what, I do keep getting caught, I do keep going to jail, but what I need is treatment, and I want the help. They enter into the program, they commit to it for two years, they have to show up weekly, they're randomly tested. I'm very happy to say 68% of our clients have reduced in jail nights, as well as in arrests, which, while you were saving, we don't produce profit, we are able to show that we save funds for the city. The other program that we started, regrettably, but out of necessity, is the opium extension program. We've had to start a heroin docket. The reality is, it's an epidemic, if not endemic, rate in the city, in this county. And we are able to show you statistically, we take in about 250 clients per year. Unfortunately, only about 150 actually keep with us. We issue warrants immediately, because this is not one of those things where we can let a pass go by. We've actually, regrettably, I have to say, in 10 years of running the mental health court, we had six individuals die, five of those people from court, we had six individuals die, five of those people from natural causes. In three years of running the drug courts, we've actually had 16 people die, all of them from overdose. Most recently, it was actually a person who is, was a veteran, he died two weeks ago of an overdose. The other court that we started, and we were honored to have both Councilmember Craig, as well as Councilmember Mills present, and Judge Barrows helped tremendously, is the Military and Veteran Service Docket. It's a very unique program. I think a lot of programs that you're going to come seeing out of the federal government are really focused on people who've strapped their boots in, they've put their boots to the ground. We don't only take those who have honorable discharge, but also those who have less than honorable, as well as dishonorable, because we're finding those are the people who have a greater propensity to commit misdemeanor crimes. We've had tremendous success in that program, and we'll have our first graduation after two years in April. So, of course, you'll all be getting those emails, and your aides will be letting you know. The last program I'm going to speak about is probably the one that's also been near and dear to the city's heart, because I think we've had to change our understanding of what is typical of prostitution and solicitation. We consider these individuals victims of prostitution and solicitation, victims of human trafficking. I, myself, do the Human Trafficking Questionnaire, which is administered by the Polaris Project, and I can tell you that the average age of any participant in our program of sexual abuse is eight and a half. When I speak publicly, and I've been honored to speak in Europe and talk to their courts, as well as the International Bar Conference, I can't look at an individual in the city of Columbus who is walking the streets and say, oh, well, there's a 40-year-old who's just trying to get by and make money and support a drug habit. I see an eight-and-a-half-year-old girl who's been victimized her entire life, who's been isolated, and is, who is looking for an opportunity to say, I know I've messed up, I just need some help. And through this unique bench and this collaboration, not just with the city, but with the commissioners, as well as private nonprofits who come forth and say, what can we do? The Changing Actions to Change Habits Program will have its fourth graduation, and I'm proud of each one. I also would be remiss if I didn't mention that the reinvestment side of all of our programs, we worked with the Reentry Commission, both with the mayor's office, as well as with the Franklin County Commissioners, and our own city attorney Pfeiffer's office invested and hired one of the graduates from one of our programs. And so, if there's ever an opportunity to do that, I certainly encourage it. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your financial support. If you have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer anything.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Klein. Can you tell what nonprofit organizations you're working with?
We, most specifically, we've worked with DOMA International, the, I don't want to mess this up, the Jewish women's, I always mess this up. Eileen, could you help me?
The National Council of Jewish Women.
National Council, because I always focus on the local council. The National Council of Jewish Women, we've also, within our specialized docket programs, it is, it's still a government agency, but the Vet Center provides a tremendous amount of support, especially for those who have less than honorable discharge with regard to counseling services. I can also send your aide a list of all those who get our, our email.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I, I think the court and what you're doing epitomizes the fact that the administration of justice isn't solely about retribution, but also embraces rehabilitation. And that's the true and fair form of the justice system, that embraces both and understands that there is both. So, thank you for the work that you do in your docket. I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
591-2014 to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into a contract with ACS for monitoring services associated with the continuous alcohol monitoring devices, to authorize the expenditure of up to $200,000 for monitoring services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code 1959, and declare an emergency. Judge, since I have you here, I believe these are unique devices, and that's why we're waiving the competitive bidding provisions?
Yes, Mr. Klein, that's correct.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
645-2014 to authorize the appropriation of $760,000 from the collected fees fund, authorize the city attorney to extend contracts with Linebarger, Gogan, Blair, and Sampson LLP and Capital Recovery Systems, Inc., for the collection of delinquent accounts, to authorize the payment of court costs, the reimbursement of collected overpayments and accounting reversals as needed, to authorize the expenditure of $750,000 from said fund, to waive the competitive procurement provisions of the Columbus City Code and declare an emergency. City Attorney Pfeiffer, could you please touch upon the competitive bidding waiver?
Chairman Klein, President Ginther, members of council, yes. In addition to that, let me give you some historical background. Prior to my becoming city attorney, these two collection agencies were brought on board by my predecessor. By way of historical doc, by way of historical information, in 2003, these two outside collectors collected $730,000. In 2013, they collected $2.5 million. They have an outstanding record of doing business with us. Now, the issue of competitive bidding, it used to be prior to 2009, that if we had a collection agency collect $100, they would get 30 of that, we would get 70. But this council in 2009 enacted legislation which said, the collection agency will get its fee, in addition to, when you go after the debtor, the collection agency will not only collect the debt owed Columbus, but the 30% fee would also be added. So, in reality, we are no longer only getting 70 cents on a dollar when our outside collection agencies collect, we're getting 100%, and the collection agency is then getting its fee. So, first of all, we're very satisfied with this, these two collection agencies, their records have been outstanding. As to the issue of competitive bidding, since the fee is always going to be paid to the collection agency, I'm not quite sure how we do competitive bidding, but certainly we are going to look at other agencies out there and try to figure out if some could be more efficient in collecting than these two agencies do. But I will tell you, we are very pleased with the performance of these two agencies over the years, and I would hope that you would enact this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Second. Craig, Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
There's one more piece in legislation, and I yield the floor to Councilmember Mills.
I thank you, Chairman Klein. I'd like to present ordinance 0661-2014 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to expend $1,321,000 or so much thereof that may be necessary for the payment of rent for office and warehouse space used by the Department of Public Safety and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes expenditure and for the payment of rent for four existing lease agreements for office and warehouse space. The expenditure authorized by this ordinance for that payment contains four leases with automatic renewal provisions included. I'm going to ask that Deputy Director Ford, or should Bush from Rakowsky's offer share comments related to this ordinance?
Sure. Councilmember Mills, this ordinance is a routine ordinance. We bring it to every year. We have leases established with these four facilities for a fire warehouse and various police facilities. We come to council once a year to seek the appropriation to match the leases. Items like the fire warehouse are an example.
Thank you. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage and call for a vote by voice.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
I yield the floor back to Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Moving on to Public Utilities, Council President. 363-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Lane and Liner LLC for the 2013 annual lining project, to expend up to $4,397,116.68 from the sanitary sewer general obligation fund. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
471-2014, I'd like to remove it from the table by voice vote.
Second. Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
To authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement with U.S. Bank National Association for E-Lockbox Services, to authorize the expenditure of $30,000 from the water operating fund and declare an emergency. I move for passage by voice vote.
Second. Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller. Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
And finally, 548-2014 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter
into a contract for the option to purchase shoeing pump parts with Columbus Supply, to authorize the expenditure of $1, to establish the contract from the general fund, to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code 1959, and to declare an emergency. Director Davies, could you touch upon the waiving competitive provisions?
Yes, sir. It's an existing UTC, Councilmember Klein, and it's the only person that provides that. It's equipment that, that they provide the services for, so that's what the contract's for.
Okay. Thank you, Director Davies. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that wraps up Safety and Utilities, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor's yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Public Service and Transportation Committee, we first have 387-2014, in which I would like to first to remove from the table.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
To authorize the Director of Public Service and to, to enter into a contract with Kokosine Construction Company to provide for the payment of the Contract and Construction Administration Inspection Services in connection with the resurfacing program, to authorize the Director City Auditor to appropriate and transfer $10,601,208.18 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the City Auditor to appropriate $10,601,208.18 within the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $10,601,208.18 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. This contract is actually the beginning of repairing and resurfacing 122 city streets, and this is also constructing 500, close to 509 ADA curved ramps along those streets. And this is very much needed, and also from last week, what the mayor presented in the capital budget of close to spending over $33 million in resurfacing, which is going to be great, especially with the, of course, the harsh winter we had. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is 488-2014, in which I would like to first to remove from the table with a voice vote.
Craig. Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
To amend ordinance 460-2013 to clarify language and to prevent possible rework in the I-7071 interchange project and to declare an emergency. And this clarifying language is, is actually changing the word conduit to facilities. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage with a voice vote.
Second. Craig. Klein.
Yes.
Miller. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
494-2014 to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify and extend a contract with Xerox State and Local Solutions Incorporated to provide parking violation processing services for the Department of Public Service Division of Mobility Options, to negotiate and change terms and conditions of the contract over a contract period as needed to implement program enhancements and improvements, to authorize the expenditure of $420,000, $25,000 from the Parking Meter Program Fund, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $185,000 within the Collection Fee Fund, to waive the formal competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to declare it an emergency. And then there's a bid waiver. They have asked me to extend the contract for one year, and also a notation that in the last few bids on this, there have been no other company that found they even provided these services. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
520-2014, first I would like to remove from the table with a voice vote.
Second. Craig. Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
To amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriations within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for the purchase of asphalt emulsion, asphalt concrete, and limestone and gravel aggregates, per the terms and conditions of current universal term contracts, to waive the formal competing, competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes for tipping at the Swayco landfill, to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend $1.5 million or so much thereof as may be necessary to reimburse the Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for personnel and equipment associated with alley rehabilitation project, to buy required commodities and paying tipping fees, and to declare an emergency. And actually, under the, for, under the competitive bidding provisions for this, is waived, because actually the city is contractually obligated to tip with Swayco. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to move for passage with a voice vote.
Second. Craig. Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
And last, I have 550-2014 to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer appropriation and monies from within the Street and Highway Bond Fund, to request a waiver of competitive bidding requirements in accordance with sections 329.27 of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish contracts with FYDA Freight Line Columbus, HYO Pegwin, and Byers Ford Lincoln Mercury for the purchase of CNG-powered tandem and single F-550 dump trucks on behalf of the Department of Public Service, Division of Planning and Operations, to authorize the expenditure of $3,116,272 from the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, and to declare it an emergency. And then, in this wave, waiver in the bidding process, is that typically it takes close to nine to 10 months to receive dump trucks through the formal bidding, and we would like to ensure that these trucks are received by the start of the 2014 and 2015 snow season. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all I have in Public Service and Transportation. President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor's yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in development have the following ordinance, beginning with 0023X-2014, a resolution of support for NWD 500 Nationwide LLC in its efforts to obtain Ohio Historic Preservation Tax Credits for the renovation of property located at 600 West Ring Street in the Arena District, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage and call for a voice, voice vote. I can never say that. I'd first like to move to remove from the table and call for a voice vote.
Second. Craig. Klein. Miller. Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And now, I'd like to move for passage, and I ask for a voice vote.
Second. Craig. Klein. Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance 0575-2014 to authorize the Director of the Develop, of the Development Department to enter into a contract with the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County to facilitate the production of affordable housing and enhance home ownership opportunities in Columbus. To authorize the appropriation and expenditure of .43%, President in Columbus, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of .43%, presently estimated at $1,482,000 of the combined rates of 5.1% of the hotel motel excise tax, and to declare an emergency. I wanted to recognize that the executive director of Affordable Housing Trust, Steve Glattman, has joined us this evening, and thanking him for his hard work. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I ask if we could return to page 24, ordinance 0664-2014. Ordinance 0664-2014 is to amend the downtown office incentive agreement with Rampart Hosting LLC for the purpose of changing the grantee's project site address from 333 West Spring Street, Suite 260, to 363 West Nationwide Boulevard, and to declare an emergency. This particular ordinance is similar to some others that you'll see when agreements, addresses change, or names change, it's just a matter of changing the agreement. It's still qualified for the office incentive, and is, address change to continue the agreement to keep it all in place. I'd first like to amend to 30-day legislation, ask and request for a voice vote.
Craig, Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next I'd like to waive second reading by voice.
Craig, Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next I'd like to move for passage by voice.
Craig, Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Next I'd like to move to the Environment Committee, if you allow me, President Ginther. Tonight in the Environment Committee, I'd like to present ordinance 0502-2014 to authorize the expenditure of $16,752,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary from the Special Income Tax Fund, to authorize the director of public services to establish an encumbrance of $16,752,000 to pay the 2014 refuse tipping fees and drop box recyclables to the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, otherwise known as SUECO, for the division of refuse collection pursuant to an existing lease agreement, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Code due to our longstanding contractual agreement with SUECO, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig, Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
That's all the legislation I have to present this evening, President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. In the Administration Committee this evening, we have one piece of legislation, which is co-sponsored by my colleague Herschel Craig, Legislation 0567-2014, to authorize and direct the director of Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with the Columbus Area Labor Management Committee, to authorize the expenditure of $50,000 from the Job Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Area Labor and Management Committee, also known as COMC, is a nonprofit organization that promotes the development of high-performing organizations through the joint participation of labor and management. Since its founding in 1986, COMC has worked with many private and public sector entities and their unions to help them achieve their goals through effective training, communication, and leadership. Before I read, Councilmember Craig, would you like to comment on that legislation?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Paley. But just simply to add, that it is a longstanding, efficient, and effective process of not simply advocacy, but really a real instrument for, well, an instrument for efficiency. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Although it is available for many of their members, the city of Columbus effectively uses COMC to assist them in many issues. With that said, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have in administration this evening.
Is there anything else to come before council this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned. We have a couple of non-agenda speakers who'll take momentarily.